I can see it.
My car phones just had an on.
This is what can I do, Bob?
You could.
I don't know, can you? Can I be, I do? Julie, what's that smile like?
All right, if anyone has any questions for the city council, please make sure that you get them to one of the GSWC ladies, so that we can check them over. I just want to reiterate, this forum is not a debate, but an opportunity to meet the candidates and hear how they stand on various subjects or concerns. City Council. The candidates for city council are running for the two-year term, oh, excuse me, for the two-four-year term openings. Please understand, there is also one two-year term opening that does require a write-in vote. At this time, we would like to have each candidate introduce themselves, and please verify if you would be willing to be a write-in for the two-year term. If you would, someone would grab a microphone and please, if Miranda, if you could start.
I'm Miranda Bauer. I have been in Winthrop my entire life. I'm... I work for the county in Gaylord, so, and I don't plan, I'm, this is my roots, and I would appreciate being on the city council.
Hello, I'm Chris Tainis. I recently moved to the area six years ago, and I've seen a lot of changes. I work for Nutrient Egg Solutions. I love the community that I've grown to live in, and I hope that you guys can listen to what everybody says up here, and, uh, thank you. I'm nervous.
I'm Martha Santelman, and I, we moved to Winthrop twenty-two years ago. I would not be willing to be a write-in candidate to answer your question for the two-year. I would like to run for the four-year, and I will wait and answer the questions when they come. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brandon Nelson. I'm born and raised in Winthrop, Minnesota. I am now a sub-in for the post office here in town, and just trying to see what I can do for you guys.
I'm Jackie Trigold. I've lived in this town for over fifty years. And my current employer is GFW Schools and the Transportation Department.
Edward Stoll, moved here in nineteen ninety-five, been a part of the community the entire time we've been around. There was a short time we lived out in Lafayette country area, but came to love this community and what we, what it has grown to be. My wife and I own a small business in town, Jenny's Cafe. Not a plug or anything, but that's who I am, I guess.
Yes, you are. Hello, everybody. My name is Bobby Paulson. I would be interested in the write-in, my, a write-in for the four or the two-year term. My wife and I and our family moved here eight years ago, so compared to everybody else, I'm very new. And to be one hundred percent honest, we moved here with the intention of living here until our kids graduated, and then we wanted to move up north, because I want to live by the North Shore. And it didn't take long before we decided this was our forever home, and we really liked this, really loved the community. And our kids have, I guess with a plug, my daughter was Miss Winthrop a couple of years ago, so there was that. And then we are also small business owners in town, so thank you, everybody, for listening.
So we have three status questions to start off the forum, and after each question, each candidate will have an opportunity to respond with a two-minute limit. Again, you will get a ten-minute warning in the back if you are close. You also have an alarm that will go off if you go over your two-minute warning. So, first question, what motivated you to run for office?
I was motivated after I was approached by multiple community members. I've, they've been on me a couple, for a couple of years, to please run, and now I, I know that I can give the community the time that it needs. Where prior, I was, wasn't sure with this being as very busy. I want to, I want to watch the town to continue to positively grow, get a new set of eyes, a younger set of eyes on the city council, and give it my best shot to keep this, uh, this city flourishing.
I also would be a candidate for the two-year write-in. I forgot to bring that up early because I was so nervous. So what motivated me to run for city council was to better understand the small community that I live in now. I've lived in Minneapolis, I've lived in New Ulm. I like the small city feel, and I'd like to keep it that way. What motivated me mostly was the people that I've met over the last six years, and particularly over the last four with the dramatic changes that have taken place. I think there's a lot of room for discussion and future projects going forward.
Quite simply, what motivated me to run were the people. Sounds like that's a common theme here. But in a letter to the Winthrop News right before Farm City Fun Fest, my husband Mark named several people he thought should consider running for city council. He did not tell me that I would be one of those in the paper. And the very next day, people came into the bank and encouraged me to run, bank customers, non-bank customers. And I have gotten a very, as, as I've been outdoor knocking and campaigning, I have gotten a very wonderful reception, and it's very encouraging. And now here I am, so, thank you.
What motivated me to run for office is, I've lived here my whole life, and I honestly don't know what goes on in city council. And I just wanted to see how I can give back to my community and see what I can do for everyone and for my family, because we're a growing family here, and we'd love to keep living here. That's all.
What motivated, motivated me to run for office is I've been a lifelong resident of Winthrop, and I would like to give back to this town. I want Winthrop to be attractive in looks and affordable for residents. Winthrop has a lot of potential for the future, but need to do it in the most cost-effective way as possible while staying on a budget. I have experience in writing grants, as I wrote many grants for my previous employer. Thank you.
So I've been a public servant for most of my life. When I was eighteen years old, I served as a volunteer fireman in a small town in Texas. In November nineteen eighty-five, I enlisted in the US Army as a military policeman. In nineteen ninety-five, my wife and I, like I said, moved to Winthrop. And by ninety-seven, ninety-eight, somewhere in there, I joined the Winthrop Ambulance Service, and I've been a member of that. There was a short time when I served in Lafayette also. As I continue to age, my body says, you know, not necessarily that I can do the physical part of the ambulance anymore, and I still feel like I need to serve our community. So, since I took the appointment for Pete's position, I think it was in March, April, I don't even know when it was, I, I've learned a tremendous amount about our city and how our city operates, so that's why I'm here. Just a side note, in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, somewhere in there, no, it was later than that, I did serve a four-year term on the GFW School as well.
Don't you have a small business in town, too, Jenny's? So like I said, you know, we, we moved to town here and we really enjoyed it. I'm excited about the way the town is going, and I've been asked why I didn't get myself on the ballot. I, I honestly never thought about it until I saw some of the things that are happening downtown, and, and I'm real, like I said, really excited how the town is going. I'm excited to be able to be part of our community, and I see so much potential in the things that are happening and the things that are going to happen in this town. So it's a, I'm excited about it all.
Question number two, if someone came to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, like a road, a bridge, et cetera, how would you evaluate whether or not that project was worth implementing?
As always, you have your MinDOT and your, your county rules and stuff like that, so there's a, there's a process, and that's how the elder, I would go about seeing if it's worth implementing, to see if that's even something that we can do. It's, there's a lot of things, whether it be, you know, Minnesota, Minnesota laws, that you have to have this far setback, or stuff like that. Is the price over a year? Is that going to make sense? Is it, is it worth it at, at the end of the day? You know, you need community feedback. You need to have all of those different things to make it, to make it work. You know, it doesn't make sense. Just because somebody wants something doesn't mean necessarily that it, it's going to be logical. We need to logically think, is this, you know, yeah, is this road going to be, make sense? Can it be gravel? Can it be, does it need to be tarred? You just, that goes all back, though, to what the city has, or the county has for rules and regulations, what MinDOT has. You need to think about the future as far as, you know, if they were tearing up the highway, would this road or this bridge make sense so we can use it as a bypass down the road versus having it a long detour? So we're not losing, you know, business, people coming in for the businesses and different stuff like that. You know, make sure it makes the most sense. You know, and obviously, I don't want to see taxes go up, so we need to make sure that the price, whether it be a one-time deal, or if we need to budget it over a, a number of years, it might not be that we need to, you know, we might need to save up and do it five years from now, so.
To piggyback on what she said, I, I think you have to follow the processes and learning laws and bylaws of what you want to get accomplished. Also, I think that the most important thing is, does the community want it? Does the community need it? And does it fit in within the budget? That's basically it.
Number one, is it necessary? If, is it absolutely necessary? Then if not, is it compelling? Is there a reason why the city should get this? If it is necessary or compelling, how do we pay for it? And number three, vote. Does the project have public support? Let's put it to a vote. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. Is it a want or a need? Do we really need it? And if we do need it, can we afford it? And is it in the yearly budget or an upcoming budget? That would be what I would say.
Mine is, who is all involved with the project besides the city? Is it county or the state? Who is going to benefit from this project and how? I would be doing a lot of research on what the cost is to do the project, as I want numbers in front of me to see the total scope of the job, as in who is paying what percentage of the total cost. Are there any grants available for it? Is anything budgeted for the project of this magnitude? This needs to be a very thought-out decision.
Well, I found this to be a very interesting question, and one that I don't think has necessarily an A-B-C answer to it, or a one, two, three, or a black or white answer. I believe there are certain measures that need to be accomplished or need to be looked at in all city projects. I've got three of them written down here. One of them is, what benefit does the project give our city or our citizens, and our citizens? And I'm just going to leave that as an open question there in your minds. Is the investment going to cost out? Is it going to, are we going to get a return on that investment? Will it bring new business to town? Will it bring new families to town? Will it bring volunteers to our emergency services? Will it bring families raising their children to Winthrop? And the third one is, what is it replacing? If it's replacing old dilapidated infrastructure, or is it a new service? The fact of the matter is, the infrastructure is a vital part of our community of Winthrop. Without good roads, parks, running water, et cetera, who's going to want to live here? We, obviously, infrastructure's expensive. We have to do it in a cost-effective manner. Thank you.
So I hear a lot of the, the want, want and need, and I think that's a kind of a catch-22, because a need for one person is, is not necessarily a need for another person. So I would look at it more as the cost versus value. What's it going to cost and how much value is it going to bring us? Is it going to bring us value through many years? Is it going to bring us value just at the very beginning? So I think cost and value maybe needs to be brought up to everybody, and it should be a vote. It should be brought in, in front of everybody, and everything should be out in the open and, and there for all, all the citizens to see. But I, I really believe that cost versus value is more of what the way I would look at it.
Question number three, if elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Our biggest thing is I would have to start with reviewing budgets to see what's most cost-effective. There might be some things that, you know, I know that somebody else might not know that, you know, as a cost-effective thing that we can do. And it kind of goes back to the catch-22 thing, like what the needs first wants. You know, and, and we might not want to think, you know, twenty-five years from now, but it might be a need then. But right now, it's a want, so if we need to, you know, start budgeting for then, or budgeting now for then, you know, whether it's, you know, a city project or whatever it might be, and that goes back into the future planning. So those are three big steps that, I think they all link together, and it's very important that they all go together.
I believe the biggest aspect in my eyes is to create more business opportunities for the city of Winthrop and create more jobs for the younger people in Winthrop. Right now, I don't see a lot of younger people working. We have the grocery store, we have Jenny's, we have Hans'. We don't have a fun place for children or young adults to go have a job. I, I used to work at a turkey farm. I used to work at McDonald's. And we don't have benefits like that as a, as a child, growing up these days with the responsibility and learning how to do a budget, a budget. So I, I, my biggest thing is, if you create opportunities for job growth and business growth, I think that the sky is the limit.
Well, I took this literally, so the three steps I would take is, the first, I would look at city jobs. Which one, which positions could become part-time again versus full-time? Second, sheriff versus police, and this is not a defund the police by any means, because my husband and I are very, my family is very back the blue. But I would like to look at the local police department and the money spent compared to other towns our size. For example, Fairfax, and there are, in Carver County specifically, the police, the local police departments contract out to the sheriff. So that would be another second idea. And a third idea is to look at using the existing infrastructure that we have instead of building new buildings and going back to buying used equipment, granted, good used equipment, but I know when Gordy was in charge, he took a twenty-year-old grader and did amazing things with it with the snow. And the last thing is, we're a town of less than fourteen hundred people. I would not be an automatic yes vote to whatever project comes along.
I would say, first thing is, just take a look at what our budget is and not spend the money foolishly that we have on budget and stay on budget. And, you know, with the school leaving, we might be losing more, you know, people in our town, so what kind of businesses we can bring in to have people coming to see our town and keep it flourishing as years to come. That's it.
I would look ahead as to what projects need to be done in the future and budget accordingly, so it's not a large amount in the budget at one time. We need to have an affordable budget, and also stay, we need to stay on track with the budget and not going over the budgeted amount, so there is some savings done at the same time.
Being on the city council, I have kind of a unique perspective of this, and I'd like to say first off that our city financial status is very healthy. Proof of that is that we have an A-plus credit rating, and our enterprise funds are very healthy. About a year ago, the city council approved investing our enterprise funds, our savings accounts, into a high-yield account. That's helped increase the amount in those funds. But if there were financial issues, the first thing you have to do is look at the current budget and see what bloat is there. Then you have to eliminate that bloat, lower the budget. You never want to cut services, but there are times when it's necessary, when you have to look at that, you have to make those difficult decisions. And that decision is not a one person, or a two person, or a three person. That's the city council and the city staff that make that decision. Look at ways to increase revenue by bringing larger tax base to Winthrop, new businesses, new housing. Raising taxes is the last thing you want to do in a community small, in a small community. We're, Winthrop is lucky that we have a, a large population of millennial people. A lot of them do work out of the city. However, we do have that large population, but we also have a large elderly population that we need to make sure that they are taken care of as best we can. This year, as evidence of that, the city council, we worked really, really hard to make sure that our levy increase was one of the lowest in the local area, maybe even the state. I'm getting a wave. Thank you.
Was I the first one to get the wave?
So I, I think a big thing is, we need to bring in more business. We need to bring people to our town. I hear a lot of people talking about cutting this, lots of cutting, lots of surviving. And Winthrop is not here to survive. Winthrop's here to live. We need to build Winthrop, and we need to live in Winthrop. One of the ways to do that is, is not for the city council to decide it, it's for the community. The community needs to, they make, I call it Winthrop money. You work in Winthrop, you make Winthrop money. And if you go to Hutchinson and New Ulm and spend it at Walmart, you just took money out of Winthrop and you went and took it to another town. Now, I work in Glencoe, so I have Glencoe money, and I come in here and I go shop locally. I'm bringing Glencoe money into Winthrop. And if other, if everybody's bringing money into Winthrop, people are going to want to put small businesses in. We have the WEDA, we got the city council, we got Winthrop Opportunities, we got all these tools that can help us bring in, and they, they did help us a lot, but that helps us bring in businesses into town. So I'm more of a, I like the positive side of it, and yes, there's going to be times where you have to cut, there's going to be times to do all that, but we've really got to work on building Winthrop and, and living, not just surviving.
All right, now we have some questions for the, from the audience. First one, what do you see for the future of the school in Winthrop?
Well, there's a, a couple of different things I can see as a future for that. There's the future of it being tore down and turned into something else by a developer, which easily could be apartments. We all know that Winthrop is pretty short on, you know, rental properties as a whole. I would like to see that. You could, we could see if it would be cost-effective in any way for, if the city would end up with it, and that fact of, would it be a community center, stuff like that. But again, it goes back to, is it in the budget for us to take it? Or is it, is it feasible, stuff like that? So that goes back to the future planning, and as a whole, I think, you know, housing would be a, a good thing to put there and, and see where it goes. You know, if we have somebody that brings, brings housing in, that'll, that is a big tax, you know, it's a tax gain for us.
I really don't know much about what's going to happen in the, the old school in Winthrop, but I have, do know what's happened to the one in Gaylord, and I don't want to see that happen to the one in Winthrop. Whether it falls in budget or not, I'd like to do something that's beneficial for the community, whether it's a community center, or whether it's more cost-effective, just to demolish it and sell the property off to affordable housing for people to be able to afford to live in Winthrop. I know as a single person myself, I cannot afford to live in Winthrop on my own. I would need a second income to be able to buy a property in this town. And when I moved here six years ago, I would have been able to afford it, so. I would see that doing whatever's in the budget for the, the high school is what should best serve the community.
So in my, in my campaigning and door knocking, that has never come up, so. We do have a good friend that took one of the schools in New Ulm and got together with some developers, and they turned it into beautiful apartments, and I believe they're, it's affordable housing. So that would probably be my first step was to, would be to look into something like that. To, and then use the history of the school and try to and just keep it, keep it within, I don't know, because I, I haven't been in the, the Winthrop High School quite a bit. I know the auditorium is beautiful, but I, I would like to see something like that done with it.
I would say we have to see what the, what they want to settle for, obviously, first, and then, yeah, we definitely need more apartments or living. If it can be turned into living, obviously, you have to check to see if it has to be tore down, and if you can tear it down, depending on what the code is or what's in the school. Or, yeah, rec center for the young kids and the young families, that'd be nice. Because I know a lot of people go to New Ulm to the rec center down there, so that would be.
I would say the same as Chris. I don't want it to be in eyesore. It's right on the highway. And I think we need to get the community's input on what they would like to see. Is it a feasible situation? Is it something we have, you know, with, you want to stay on budget, but if we can find some developers, and we need income-based housing in Winthrop. There's, you know, there's really nothing as far as income-based housing for There's, you know, there's really nothing as far as income-based housing for our residents.
First and foremost, you have to evaluate the viability of the building. Is it worth repairing? Is it worth, what is it worth? So having said that, my thoughts have always been, you take from the auditorium, say, to the east, and you keep that portion of it, and you figure out how you can make that a viable community center with the gymnasium, with the auditorium part of it. And then everything to the west of that would be, my vision would be to tear it down and get rid of it, and then have that property developed into housing, high-end front business, whatever it might be. Fact of the matter is, we don't really know at this point what our options are, and so it's kind of a difficult question to answer.
I agree with that, that there's so many variables there. But some things that, you know, with the rec and community center would be great. Also, maybe looking into a school for challenged children, something that we can still use the building if it's usable. If it's not, then we, that obviously takes care of, you know, other things, housing, an art school, a really big bar, I don't know, there's all sorts of things you can do in a big building, right? But it, there's too many variables really to go any further. I think with that, it's just, there's a reason that the school's not there. So I'm guessing that it would take a lot to just to get it usable.
So we've had several questions on this topic. Being on city council means interacting with our city staff and collecting information. How do you see yourself interacting with staff? And how will you accommodate that into your schedule? We would like to start with Brandon.
Is there a mic?
I'd say, very, I'm very open-minded, very good at listening. And I'm always willing to listen. So if there are any questions or concerns, I'd be there to listen and find out whatever the question is, and give them the answer as fast as possible.
Jackie?
First and foremost, being on the council and dealing with staff, you are not their boss. So, and you have to know what the policies and procedures are with different, depending upon what the situation is. And I am willing to listen and not take a side. I want to listen and get both sides and get all the information.
Martha?
Would you repeat the question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Being on city council means interacting with our city staff and collecting information. How do you see yourself interacting with staff? And how will you accommodate that into your schedule?
Well, I work full-time, but I have breaks and an hour lunchtime. So if I, if it's something that needed to be done during the day, I would just make a phone call and give information that way, or come up on my lunch hour. I know they leave here at noon on Fridays, I believe, so Monday through Thursday. And just email, or telephone calls, or, you know, I would just be willing to give information, you know, anytime and any way I could.
Ed?
So first off, there's a chain of command in our city. So we've got our employees that report to a supervisor, a supervisor that reports to a city administrator. And if it comes to the city council, then it's, then I'm sure hoping that it's been to those other, those other two people first. As far as, how do I, how would I interact with them? My phone is on 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I have been called at work and I answer my phone. I've been called in the evenings and I answer my phone, so by city staff. I have no issues whatsoever fitting them into my schedule, making them a priority.
I would agree with him in the chain of command. When I was in the Marine Corps for eight years, we had a chain of command. And if you follow that, it typically seems to work out the best. Accessibility, and just being able to listen to people and kill them with kindness. You know, a lot of people, they come into a situation and they want to be aggressive. Just the easiest way to do is calm somebody down, and just open your ears and listen, and be respectful while doing so.
So my big thing is transparency. Everything has to be transparent, and that's with the staff, with the community. I will get an answer. I've been blessed with a job that I, as a manager in outside sales, that if something comes up, I can, I do have the ability to leave and to help take care of something. But I think with transparency and following the chain of command, I don't think there's any issues that can't be handled.
I would agree with these guys with the chain of command, obviously. Like Ed stated, they all have supervisors. Without supervisors, they have a supervisor. It just, you keep going now. As far as availability, I do have days off during the week. I have days off on the weekends. I'm off at night. Occasionally, do I get called into work? Absolutely. But I would not be opposed to learning these guys' jobs as well. Because how am I supposed to make a decision, whether it be the right, wrong, or indifferent, from a community member that comes up to me if I don't know their procedures that they do throughout the day? So riding along with the maintenance guys, you know, going out and doing snow removal with them, and being a part of that. You know, I would make time for that. Because how am I supposed to address the issue if somebody has an issue if I don't even know how they're going about it themselves?
Next question. How will you gather info to make a decision? Let's start with Brandon.
It's a very interesting question, I feel. It depends on what the question is, and how drastic that it needs to be answered, and how fast. I've been blessed that I know lots of people in the community, so I have a wide spectrum of people that I can talk to to find out the information if I do not know the information. And then answer the question and get the info to the people that are asking for the info.
Jackie?
Can you repeat that question?
How will you gather information to make a decision?
I will, I will want to know both sides. I will gather all the information that is needed, and find out who I need to get that information from, or where I can get that information from. But you can't make a decent, an informed decision when you don't have all your info.
Martha?
I'm not really sure I understand your question. So I thought we kind of answered this already. But I agree with Brandon. It depends, it depends on the question. It depends on the context of the question, I guess, where I would go and get the answers from. Whether it's the public, whether it's somebody from the city, whether it's going back and looking at the city charter, whether it's asking questions or opinions of people I respect and that know about the city. You know, I would definitely do research before I gave my answer to whatever question it was.
Ed?
I guess I would really like to know the context of the question before I could answer it with any definite answer. However, I will just say that when, again, I have a unique perspective. We get a council packet Friday before the council meeting, and typically, there's the pros and the cons of everything that we are going to discuss in that council packet. If I have questions, I go to Michael, ask the question. He'll give me an answer. If I don't like that answer, then I'll go ask other people and see what the, see what I learn outside of that group. I guess that's the best way I can answer it without much context there. Thanks.
So when I was in the corporate world, we used to have these little gatherings for, we'd call them kaizons. And it was basically a gathering of people that didn't know the situation. But you got all sorts of different perspective from people that weren't actually privy to all the information. And similar to what a committee does, but with the kaizons, you bring in absolutely no knowledge, you just shoot the idea out there, and then hopefully you came to a solution that satisfied everybody.
As I said, it seems like a vague question, but, you know, I look at, I try to look at all sides, everybody's aspect of it. You have to look at the rules, if that's what it applies to. You have to look outside the box and say, you know, if, you know, I've had people tell me, hey, this happened in town. And I said, okay, now tell me the whole story. Like, what happened right before that, and what happened right after that? And then let's see if we can come to a reasoning behind it. And then you have to deep dive into the research if necessary. I mean, a lot of things that people complain about, is it somebody got their feelings hurt? Is it, I mean, there's so many, like I said, it's such a vague question on getting your information and where you go from it. But I think if you try to look at all sides and look outside the box every time, it works out good for you.
I would say as well, you have to get all of, you know, when somebody comes up to you and asks you a question, they're obvious, they have a reason why they're asking that. Dig a little deeper into what their perspective is and what they're wanting. Because sometimes that, you might have a different idea in your head, or something that kind of, you guys challenge each other at that point, and then that could be for the decision. You know, they might say, well, I want this because this is my idea. Okay, grant. But why do you want that? Dig a little deeper into what they want and what their true meaning of their question is. Because it might be that, the decision that I make might be a little bit on what they, what they're asking, along with what is legal? What is, what the legal standpoint of things, or different things? So there's a lot of things that go into that decision, you know, after you go through, through it, and just see what they're, what they want.
Next question. How do you feel about the city park improvements that are currently in process? Brandon?
It's a good question. And it seems like it's getting, like, cleaned up. They took down the old baseball dugouts and stuff, and the field cleaned up. I know there's, you see more kids running around having fun biking through the, like, through the park. And it'd be nice to see what we can do to keep it getting better.
Jackie?
First and foremost, I'd like to commend the ladies that have done all the fundraising for park improvements. And get a little more information. I know it's, it's great that, you know, we have Farm City Columbus in the park. Yes, we want to have a nice-looking park. So you can do things that are cost-effective, and like I said before, either grants. You know, I'd be willing to help write a grant, because grants have to be written with certain words. You can't just say, I want this money because I want to do this. You need to get out there and do research, and, you know, the wider walking paths, and, you know, the handicap accessible. You know, that's all things that we're going to need.
Martha?
So this is an interesting question again, because during my campaigning, during my door-knocking, I heard polar opposites on what people want with the park. And while all six of our children loved going to the park and playing there, it was a nice, safe place to be. Does the park need to be clean? Of course. Do we need clean, healthy bathrooms? Yes. But do we need a splash pad? I'm not sure about that. To be honest, I just can't wrap my head around that one. It's fun, we had, all of our children would have friends come over and they'd play in their sprinklers in our yard, and they probably had more fun because there wasn't cement there. And they got to build little huts and play and dress up, and... When the city can afford it, great. But the spending and spending, it just seems like it would just be never-ending, actually. So, thank you.
Ed?
Sure wish I'd had it when I raised my seven adult children. And I'm hoping that Jacob will take advantage of what's there when it gets there. The park is one of our greatest assets in the city of Winthrop. And the improvements that are going on in there are, again, some of them are costly. That is correct. Is it going to bring people to our city? I believe it will. I believe people are going to come to that splash pad from all around. I've heard the, I think it's Buffalo Lake. Is that the right one? Where lots of people from outside the community come into town from all around. So I do think that you're going to see a lot of outside families coming into the park. Again, as, I think it was Jackie, the ladies that are out there doing the fundraising right now for this, for the park improvements, kudos to them, they've worked really hard at it. You know, and maybe some of you don't know that some of our park equipment is, it needs to be gone because it's not actually safe. And it costs money.
So I've been coming to the, I've been coming to the Winthrop City Park since 1975. My great-grandmother was a Pago. I call her Pago, I know it's Pago in Winthrop. In New Ulm, we call them Pagos. So I love the park, I love what it gave me as a child. I love what it gives the future generations. I believe the splash pad is a little over-rushed. I don't think they've done the infrastructure research anymore to do up there for pressure and things of that nature. I don't think they've done the infrastructure research they need to do up there for pressure and things of that nature. From what I understand, there was only one quote on the splash pad, and I think there should be several.
Bobby?
I was thinking and not paying attention to that. I'm very excited about the park. It's bringing people in. There's more, more people are gonna be coming in. And I'll bring it back to what I said before with cost versus value. Yes, there's a big cost, but the value is there that it's gonna be there for a long time. It's gonna bring families in, and all of a sudden, we're getting Winthrop money, right? We're getting people from other towns that are coming in that go to the splash pad, that are gonna go to our little shops, that are gonna go to our stores, are gonna go to our gas station, and they're gonna buy stuff. All of a sudden, now we got Winthrop money coming in from other towns. And in my opinion, that's key. And again, the group that is doing it has been amazing, very positive. And I, I think that's a big thing that we need right now is more positivity.
I am 110% in support of the park improvements. I was the chairman for the Farm City Fun Fest for numerous years. And the feedback that we always got was how beautiful our park was. I, it's no different than anything. When you open up a project, then you open up new guidelines. Whether that be that you repaved something and now you have to go back to the ADA guidelines, where you need to have paths so wide, or you need to have a path leading to this bathroom or, and such. You know, we have a, we have people that have stepped up in this community and have fundraised repeatedly. I've been to those fundraisers. I've seen multiple of you guys at those fundraisers. And without the park, keep improving, what do, what do we, what do we have? I mean, we're, as a whole, you know, being on Farm City Fun Fest, I've had people come from all over and have told us that our celebrations in our park are one of the nicest around. So keep improving.
The next question is, what is your opinion of the changes to the Second Street, including streetscaping? Bobby?
Wow. I think Second Street is flipping amazing. And it's no secret where we opened our shop right on Second Street, and I'm so excited to see what, to see the final product of it. It, it is, it's gonna be a, a thing that people are gonna come to see, right? I mean, they're gonna, we got little shops there. People are gonna come down there. They're gonna see how beautiful it is. The, I'm excited about the park at the end. That's gonna be set up with all the electricities. We can have food trucks there. There's all sorts of stuff. And there again, this is something that you guys as citizens have to be like, what can we do now? We have this. This is a tool that was given to us. What can we do to bring people into town? What can we do to have fun and to bring people into Winthrop? And get some of that Huch money in Winthrop, get some of that New All money in Winthrop. But the, the, the city is putting the tools right in front of us. And I feel like the citizens need to be more involved in, let's get, let's get Second Street people down there. Let's do something down there. I'm right now working with the Guinness Book of World Records to try to get an event on Second Street. We are talking with some other people about doing an art show on Second Street. There's so many things that we'll be able to do there, and it's so, it's gonna be so beautiful. It's, it's gonna be great.
Martha?
And would you read the question again, Yumi?
Absolutely. What is your opinion of the changes to Second Street, including the streetscaping?
Well, since the streetscaping isn't up yet, it's hard to give an opinion of what I think of it. But from what I've heard, it's going to be, so I, I didn't say this earlier, and many of you know, some don't, but I work at Perennial Bank, which is on the corner. So I have great access to seeing the traffic going up and down Main Street and on Second Street. And it concerns me that there are gonna be trees on the corners that will block the view of people. I mean, I'm not sure if stop signs are in the plan. If not, then I think they should be. Because, you know, in, in other cities, you're supposed to yield to the right. But if you're coming north on Main Street, Main Street is typically thought of as the primary street, and Second Street is not. But, you know, if there's no stop sign on Second Street, and, you know, you can't see because there's trees, that, that concerns me. And also, the narrowness of the roads really concerns me too. People come into the bank and say, so what is Second Street gonna be, a one-way? I'm like, well, no, I don't think so. So it, it's mostly the size of the streets and the size of the trucks going up and down Main Street that concern me. And again, I have a great view all day long of the comings and goings, and it's a little scary to me sometimes.
Brandon?
Yeah, it definitely looks like it's gonna be fancy. That's for sure. It's definitely gonna spruce up downtown a little bit. But my feeling, my thoughts on it, I feel like it wasn't ran the correct way. I mean, they should have tore the whole street out all year. They should have had a progression, right? Started there, went down, went down, 'cause, I mean, I even, we talked about it, my wife and I. There's sometimes you even forgot the grocery store is down there, 'cause you couldn't, it was just, you had to go all the way around town. But I hope it definitely brings people in to, to our town to see what we did. And yeah, it's definitely, like I said, it looks fancy.
Ed?
Right, I know it there for myself, so I don't forget it. Well, first off, I don't think this is the appropriate place to have this discussion. It's been discussed, it's been approved, it's being built. So what do I think of it? I am so excited. My, our business did not suffer. It did not grow, but it did not suffer. Growth is painful. It hurts. And when we're all said and done, if there's people that don't like the street, I'm not sure what you can like. I don't know if I can ask this question to Michael, but I'm going to. Second Street is not a truck route, correct?
It's a casade. It's a county state highway.
Okay. So I do believe there's plenty of clearance to get between, get two trucks side by side down there. It was designed by Mendot, not by anybody in the city of Winthrop or whatever. It was designed by Mendot, so. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say. Thanks.
Just an interruption. Can we remind everyone to please silence their phones?
I didn't bring mine in.
Sorry. Christian?
I guess I'm, it's gonna be beautiful. It will look great. I guess my biggest concerns are, it wasn't necessary evil because of the infrastructure that was over 100 years old below. It had to be replaced for the benefit of the whole city. Spending the money on the beautification of Second Street, I'm not totally in favor with that. I don't know if they need trees. They're tearing the ones out in Gaylord that they planted there six or seven years ago because they're causing issues. And then the maintaining of the sidewalks and now the special blocks that were brought in between the trees, that's gonna be a cost to the community, and how is that budgeted into the budget as well?
Jackie?
I think it's gonna look great. You know, and, and people think it's so narrow. Going up Main Street, by Main Street and Second Street, I drive a bus, I've met a sign, I, I'm narrow. It's not narrow. You just, you, you can't, you know, go flying up the street. And that's basically, the bump outs are to kind of slow traffic down to, you know, so you're not out in the middle of the intersection looking for traffic. And I, I'm excited for it to be done. Because it, it seems like we've had construction for a long time. And, and hopefully, you know, once it's all finished, we can fill the, the store or the storefronts with businesses and, you know, get more people in Winthrop.
I, I do like the downtown and how it's, what it's become. I, as far as goes the bump outs and stuff like that, I've personally been into all of them. And thank goodness there was bump outs, because at that point, you know, you could, you weren't hoping to, that you didn't get hit. I think it's, but it's gonna be more pedestrian friendly. As far as Jenny's Cafe and all those go, the sidewalks are wider. You can have patio seating. Who does not like to sit outside the, I mean, I get it. It's, it's, is that what it's there for? Maybe. But we can utilize it. As Bobby said, you can utilize that, that space for food trucks. How many people go places because there's a food truck there? Quite a few. It's just stuff like that. We can, we can open up and have more events down there. Whether it be pull a trailer down there. How many places do you go when you go to Stillwater? You go places, do you, do you remember, like, oh yeah, that downtown was beautiful? That's gonna be one joke.
Next question. What do you see as the future of the police department? Jackie?
I, personally, I don't think we need to get rid of the police department. Look at the money we just spent on remodeling the police department. We are getting a canine. You know, first of all, is that something Sibley County wants to take on? We need to have those numbers in order to make an informed decision. And my other concern is response time. If there's something going on down by Bell Plain and they're all down there, and there's something happening in Winthrop, and the Given and Gaylord are all tied up, what happens? We need our police department.
Miranda?
As far as the police department goes, we do need our police department. I've seen other cities that do not have police departments or are, you know, staffing shortages or whatever it may be. Law enforcement and/or any first responder field right now is really struggling with numbers. As far as the police department goes, we have, we have a striving police department. And they are, they're wonderful. We need to keep those people here, whether, and that's with competitive wages. I, I understand that's a big thing. But without that police department, you're going to have, you know, your, your higher response times. You're gonna have different, different things like that. You know, it all goes, it kind of all goes hand in hand. Is Sibley County gonna take it on? Well, by legislation, they might have to. But that goes back to staffing. Are, are our staff gonna go to the county? Now we just lost four good people to, to, out of this area. So I think we need to, we need to keep that in mind and keep our police department and appreciate everything that one, each one of them guys do.
Ed?
I'm very pro law enforcement, emergency services. I think I would move out of town if we closed our police department.
Christian?
I guess I didn't fully understand the, the question. Do you mean, are you asking if I approve of the police department? Or do you think it's overstaffed? Do you think it's understaffed? Do you think it's, I, I guess I don't understand the question.
Sure. What do you see as the future of the police department?
I, I guess since they just built the new facility, I, I see it staying here for quite some time. I guess the only question I have is the staffing of the police department. It seems like a murder kill. I don't know the schedules. I don't know the budgets. So I can't actually with intelligence say that it is overstaffed or understaffed. But I know when I moved here, there was four police officers, and I think there are six or seven now, and they're getting a canine. So, no, and that's why I'm saying, I can't speak with intelligence, so you can hide your head all you want. But I, I said I couldn't speak with intelligence on the subject, 'cause I didn't typically know.
Bobby?
So I, I actually reached out to, I went to school in Silver Lake, and I reached out to some people I know there and asked them, because they no longer have a police officer. And everybody I talked to hates it. Even the people that get in trouble from the cops hate it, that there isn't one there. I was personally, I was in a situation many, many years ago in Hutchinson where my oldest daughter started choking and she quit breathing. And I called the Hush Police Department, or called 911, the Hush Police Department, who everybody says is so overstaffed with 21 officers, whatever they have. They were there under two minutes and saved my daughter's life. So I will never ever say or want to not have a, a police department in town. They are here to help us. And I think all the people that say we don't need one would feel very different if they sat there and they were holding their child limp, waiting for a police officer to get there.
Martha?
Just to reiterate, I am not defund the police by any means. I am so thankful that we do have a police department. I am thankful that we have ambulance and emergency. Miranda was actually on a call when our daughter rolled her car quite a few years ago, and the ambulance came. I just would like to look at the staffing and the budget. And I am also in favor of a police liaison at the school too. I think that's a wonderful thing for the kids to see.
Brandon?
I would say, I mean, I don't, in realistic world, we would not have police, an ambulance, and fire department. I know some people dislike something about certain things, but realistically, everyone in this room has probably had some interaction with one, good or bad. You know, speed, I guess. But, you know, it just has to stay in the budget and keep them here.
Next question. What is your stance on attending local Winthrop events? And how have you volunteered locally in Winthrop and not just in the last six months? Miranda?
As far as volunteering, I was on the Winthrop ambulance for over 10 years. I served, I read out of high school, literally, I signed up for class July. I graduated in June. So I actually had looked into it prior to that. So yes, I served as a Winthrop ambulance. I was the maintenance person for them as well. I was on the Farm City Fun Fest and also the chairman for numerous years. I was on the Peace Luizen Church, Church Council. I'm all about community events. I think they're grand. I, I volunteered on
I, I volunteered on numerous things that I can't necessarily name them all because it's been quite a few. I've been a mentor for Peace Lizard Church. I've done stuff, many different things.
Bobby?
I'm still taking my notes. So, when we first moved here, one of the first events that we went to was the Christmas in the country. And one thing that my, my son said, that we stationed a fire pit. So, we went and had those big fire pits made. So, those were a donation from our family. So, I was right away when we first moved here, we're like, yes, we want to be part of this. So, you know, I'm in the local band, Eagle Lake, that we play at some events. I've helped with the Lions Breakfast. My daughter was Miss Winthrop, so whether I liked it or not, I volunteered for all sorts of stuff that year. And then she went on to be in Sibley County. So, we volunteered for a lot of that stuff too. So, I have not even begun to volunteer yet in Winthrop, but it's coming.
Christian?
I've never really volunteered for anything. I volunteered to grow this beard from July on to do a few houses for Santa Claus for some of the children in the area. But other than that, I really haven't volunteered. I wouldn't like to volunteer more. We actually did the street party, Nutria helped undo the tables and bring the chairs and clean up and stuff like that. And, but I think community giving is part of the process of city council, so that's why I'm here.
Ed?
Twenty-seven years on the Winthrop Ambulance. I don't know if that counts. Been the captain since 2020, serving my crew as well as the city of Winthrop. I'm on call right now, so the pager goes off. Goodbye, everyone. I appreciate your vote, November. I don't do a lot of, I don't do the festivals. There's enough, there's enough on my plate with the ambulance, the captain of the ambulance, and now the city council. So, I guess... Oh yeah, I volunteered at the cafe too, by the way.
Martha?
I mostly volunteer kind of behind the scenes, but a couple of significant things, I think, is when Zion Lutheran was first looking into starting Dad's Treasures childcare. I was on the board there when it first started. And I was on the Winthrop Library Friends, when we used to do tea parties and with all of our girls. It was great, made a great time doing that. And I would volunteer at the library even, and I did work there for a short time, but I would volunteer there when I, you know, wasn't officially an employee there. Right now, I'm on the board at the Lodge of Winthrop. And then during Farm City Fun Fest, like I said, a lot of the times it's behind the scenes, so my husband and I will walk around and pick up garbage. And we do that every block we go onto. We always bring bags with us and we pick up garbage when we walk around town and that's sort of volunteering. And, you know, we would fold up chairs after, you know, a Farm City Fun Fest, after the chicken dinner. And I volunteered, I think, two years in a row now, serving for the chicken dinner. So, yeah, again, it's behind the scenes. And while our children were at home, I was more focused on them and I have a little bit more time now, so...
Jackie?
I have done, was on the Farm City Fun Fest committee years back. I am joining the GFW athletic boosters. And I've also volunteered to take admissions at the games. And thankfully, they've all done basketball, so I don't have to be outside. And I've volunteered for our church fundraisers. And any opportunity that I can volunteer, it's always fun to meet new people and, you know, see who's all in your community because you've maybe never interacted with them before.
Brandon?
Well, when I was in high school, I was a Boy Scout and we used to help clean up the park and anything around town with the Boy Scouts. And my dad was the president of the Winthrop Game Detective League, so I volunteered a lot of time out there at the chutes and bingo and all kinds of stuff. As of lately, I'll be honest, I haven't. And that's why when I moved back to town a few years ago, I was like, well, I think it's time to start seeing what I can do for my community. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you for all for joining us and for answering all of our questions. We will be taking a five-minute intermission. There are snacks and drinks behind you. And if anyone has questions for the mayor, please bring them to a GFWC lady.